Okay. Good evening and welcome to the Select Board Meeting for July 8th, 2024. I am the Board Chair, Eric Eldridge. The following meeting is being recorded and broadcast by Tingsborough Media. The meeting is available through our local cable access channels on Xfinity and Verizon FiOS and is a live stream on our website, www.tingsboroughma.gov. A recording of this meeting will be available through the video on demand portion of our website. Open meeting laws require that any member of the audience who intends on recording either video or audio so declare that now. Seeing none, after instruction from the State Fire Marshal and the Tingsborough Fire Chief, in the event of an emergency, there is an exit directly across from me at the rear of the room and one to my left. With that, I would like all of those who can please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Start with Board Introductions. To my left.
Good evening, Jacqueline Schnacker's Executive Assistant.
Good evening, Ron Schneider.
Hello, Jackie Gilfis.
Good evening, Ron Cohane.
Good evening, Colin Loizel, Town Manager.
All right. We have a action-packed agenda. We'll get right into it. Why don't we start with Meeting Minutes?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the regular session Meeting Minutes for review and approval for June 24th, 2024.
Seconded.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? That carries 4-0-0.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the executive session Meeting Minutes for review, approval, but not release for June 24th, 2024.
Seconded.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstain? That carries 4-0-0. We'll open it up for Citizen and Business Time. Seeing none. We will continue the public hearing, which is the right of first refusal for 84 Kendall Road. The, I believe the public hearing is still open, so there's no one here, but did you want to give us a quick update, Colin?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chair. The Board at its last meeting had a lengthy conversation about the property at 84 Kendall Road. As the Board is well aware, the town has been notified that the owner of the property has a bona fide offer to sell the property for an assisted living continuing care campus for which Town Meeting approved a zoning change. Because it's under Massachusetts General Law Chapter 61A protection, the town has a right of first refusal. At its last meeting, the Board asked me to work with council for the landowner to put together a draft development agreement. As I mentioned at your last meeting, they made several concessions in their letter asking for the waiver of the right of first refusal, but as council has indicated, those aren't binding. The way we would make them binding is by codifying them in a development agreement. I have nothing new to add at this point. The developer did, the attorney representing the landowner, did note that he thought his clients would be amenable to a development agreement. He went on vacation shortly thereafter for the fourth and returned to the office today, so I haven't seen a draft. Also, the Board asked that when there is a draft available, we send it to the Conservation Commission for review. Because we don't have a draft and they haven't had a chance to review it, I would recommend that the Board continue this hearing to its next meeting, which is July 29th.
Thank you. Yes, anybody have any questions, any problems with continuing the public hearing until our July 29th meeting?
Nope.
So, I think we're good. We don't have to take any action. Do we need to vote to keep it open? Would you like us to?
Yes, there should be a motion to continue this to the next meeting.
Okay. I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move the Select Board continues hearing to the next Select Board Meeting.
Seconded.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? That carries 4-0-0. Okay. Now, public hearing for permanent modification of license outdoor dining for La Santa at 386 Middlesex Road.
Mr. Chair, I move the Select Board open the public hearing and waive the reading of the hearing notice and the legal ad.
Seconded.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? That carries 4-0-0. The meeting is now, public hearing is now open. I guess, Jackie, if you want to kick us off and we'll see if anybody, the vast people in the audience want to weigh in.
Okay, included in your package this evening is a request for a permit modification of local license from Alberto Moreles of La Santa at 386 Middlesex Road. The applicant is seeking to modify their current Section 12 All Alcoholic Beverage License to include a covered outdoor patio on the side of the building for approximately 12 to 14 tables. The outdoor patio service is being requested during the hours of Monday through Saturday from 11:00 a.m. until 10:00 p.m. and Sunday from 11:00 a.m. until 9:00 p.m. As you remember, at the last meeting, the Board adopted an outdoor patio alcoholic beverage policy in response to a recent law signed by Governor Moore Healy allowing local licensing authorities the authority to approve modifications of premises to allow for outdoor patio service of food and alcoholic beverages without A-B-C-C approval. The applicant mailed notices to a butters that were certified by Certified Mail on June 27th and has included a proposed floor plan with the application. Comments requested from all relevant departments and the comments are included in the materials. The class's office has indicated there is a delinquency in the tax payments. The applicant is aware and was expected to address this prior to trying to eat, but as of right now, they have not. So that's something the Board will take into consideration in their motion. The Board of Health did note that it's still being permitted in all outdoor areas. The food and beverages are served to the public by employees of restaurants. And it should be noted that the applicant is working with the building inspector on patio upgrades. However, there were no issues of the loss of, potentially loss of four parking spaces as noted in your request or comments this evening.
Thank you. Seeing that there's no one here from the public, I will open it up to the Board. Anybody have any questions or comments?
Well, Mr. Chair, you know, I think this would be a great addition, you know, for La Santa. You know, I haven't heard anybody, there just seems to be no complaints, no issues with residents. All the Boards seem to be very, you know, saying that this would be great, no issues, just making sure that they understand what exactly the rules and regulations are. And I think it would be a great addition once they pay their taxes. And I can make that part of the motion.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments?
Nope.
Okay. Yeah, totally agree. This is just a continuation on from what we had dealt with at our last meeting, as long as we address the issue that this is contingent upon them getting current on taxes and the call in the motion covers that in the, at the end, is that, because it looks like the language was slightly different.
Yeah, we added at the end of the motion, upon the confirmation of taxes being current, that will just allow us, if they pay tomorrow morning, we can issue the license and not have to wait for another meeting.
Okay. All right. I guess, why don't we close the public hearing?
Yep. Mr. Chair, I move the Select Board close the public hearing.
Seconded.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Public hearing closed, 4-0-0. Any further discussion on the application? With that, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move the Select Board approve the modification of local license to include the description of premises for an outdoor patio for food and alcoholic beverage service for La Santa at 386 Middlesex Road with the outdoor seating hours of Monday through Saturday, 11:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. and Sunday, 11:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. upon confirmation of the taxes being current as presented.
Seconded.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? That carries 4-0-0. Okay. Now, we can go as scheduled with the Town Manager's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Unfortunately, I'll have to start the report on a sad note by acknowledging the passing of longtime Tingsborough resident Joanne Roy. Joanne grew up in Tingsborough on Lake Muskupic and has lived there her whole life. She lived there with her sister Susan and both are staples here at Town Hall and the library. If you've been to Town Hall or the library on a Thursday, most likely you've met them. They're always spreading well wishes, they remember everyone's birthday, and in true towny fashion, they were the most honest source of feedback on all things happening in town. There will be a graveside ceremony at 10:00 a.m. on Wednesday at Memorial Cemetery, and I know that the place will be packed with staff from Town Hall and the library who had the pleasure of knowing her. In fact, the library will open two hours late on Wednesday so that all the staff can attend. So my thoughts are with Susan in this difficult time. On a more exciting note, we formally launched this morning the Tingsborough Civic Leadership Academy, which I've soft-launched in previous Town Manager Reports. The program is a collaboration with our office and Tingsborough Media. The program will run from August 18th through October 16th with a short graduation ceremony at the start of the October 22nd special Town Meeting. The class will meet weekly on Wednesdays from 6:00 to 8:00 at various locations across town depending on the topic. We are finalizing the course syllabus now, but each class will be co-taught by a department head with a focus on their department, how it's funded, how it operates, and the ways that we're working toward creating efficiencies within the department. The goal here is to bring more residents into the fold by giving a baseline understanding of local government so they're comfortable asking questions and making suggestions for increased efficiency. The application is available online and will be available until August 1st. Because our goal is to get new people into the mix, we are giving priority to folks who haven't served on a Board of Committee yet, but we will accept applications from any Tingsborough resident or business owner. It is the top story on tingsboroughma.gov and as of today, as of right now, we've received already three applications, so people are very excited. I'm happy to share that following a competitive procurement process, we've awarded a contract to Sunshine Paving Corporation for the Phase 1 work on the Sherburne Ave. parcel that was donated by the Toll Brothers. The work will include pickleball courts, walking paths, bocce courts, horseshoe pits, a pitch and putt, and shuffleboard courts. It will also include basketball courts. We finalized the contract last week and are working now to finish the schedule. Relative to that project, last week, we issued an invitation to bid for the construction of the pavilion on that site. It's a two-part contract. One will be for the concrete and footing work and one is for the actual construction of the pavilion. This will allow us to at least award the concrete work if funding doesn't permit us to also award the contract for the construction at the same time. We do have a pending housing choice grant application for $400,000 to support that work and are awaiting information from Lowell Five about a donation toward the work being done on that parcel. We are hoping to be able to utilize the external funding sources and avoid asking the CPC for additional funding. Also, last week, I awarded a contract to BME Strategies out of North Andover for Grant Management Services for the Board of Health's Public Excellence Regional Grant and to Newport Construction for the purchase of the Batuminous Concrete by our Highway Department. I just want to note on the Public Health Excellence Grant, this is now our fourth year with the grant. Every year we get about $350,000. This year it's closer to 400, and we've rarely been able to scale up the services that our Board of Health provides as well as the neighboring communities, Tuxbury, Barica, and Chelmsford. It's a fantastic program. Our Board of Health is putting out new programs all the time, so folks should really visit our website and also the Board of Health's Facebook page. A lot more on the social services front, the awareness and the education piece, and largely that's all funded by this grant, which has also helped us hire some additional staff. A copy of the town's aggregation report was included in the Board's correspondence this evening. Of note, in Quarter 1 of 2024, consumers on the town's aggregation have saved nearly $350,000 when you compare it to those who are National Grid's basic rate. We're locked into that contract until November, and so I imagine sometime in August or early September, we'll start getting some indicative pricing from Constellation Energy or Colonial Power, I'm sorry, about where we might be in November. But if folks haven't joined the aggregation or are holding out, you can opt in at any time. There's a link prominently displayed on our website for folks to sign up. At the Board's request, I reached out to National Grid to ask that they appear before the Select Board either at your last meeting in July or first meeting in August to talk about the ways that they're working to prevent future large-scale power outages and to talk about some of the more frequent outages that we've had this past year. It's looking like they'll probably attend your first August meeting. We're just waiting on a couple higher-ups at National Grid to confirm. I'd like to take a moment to recognize Thomas Collins. Mr. Collins is the local Eagle Scout that this Board authorized to construct a small fitness system at Riverfront Park. His project was completed last month. It looks great. It's a great addition to the park. I did test it out, and while I was only able to do three pull-ups, it will make a great workout system for folks in better shape. He also donated $400 that was raised for the project that he didn't spend to our Rec Committee, so we appreciate his support of our recreation programs. I wanted to congratulate Greater Lowell Tech on being awarded a $480,000 Career Technical Initiative Grant from the Commonwealth. These funds will allow Greater Lowell to provide training and placement services to 60 underemployed or unemployed individuals in our community in the electrical, welding, and carpentry fields. The private partners on this program include Gaspary Inc., Medford Wellington Service, Lowell Iron and Steel, Nishoba Building and Remodeling, Short Circuit Electric, Middlesex 3, and B.C. Electrical Services. And then finally, I was happy to join Linda Bound on City Life last week. We had a great conversation about the many things that are happening here in Tingsborough. Linda needs no introduction in town. She's a longtime volunteer. It was a great show. You can catch it on City Life's Facebook page if you missed it by some chance, but I'm always happy to talk about what is happening here in Tingsborough and anyone who will listen. That's all I got.
Excellent. Thank you for that complete update. I will open it up to the Board for questions or comments. Anybody want to start?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
You know, we've had a lot of outages, and it's great that National Grid, finally get National Grid to come in front of us. There's going to be a lot of people very interested in that discussion. There's been many outages, even more small outages than I can ever remember just recently and some longer outages. So the outages has definitely increased significantly, but, you know, for our Town Manager, if you could please ask them to, to bring in the stats, if you could, you know, I'd like to really see from their perspective what exactly, you know, and actually, you know, show the residents what exactly the number of outages that we've been having recently. And I'm sure, I know they have all that information, so that would be great to see and then what they're doing to actually try to reduce the number of outages. You know, the west side of the river, you know, there was many long, long outages for there for a long time, and, you know, they did a lot of tree cutting was one of the things they did. They did a few other things to upgrade, you know, the service, so I'm hoping they come with a few, a few things that they're planning to do to help us out here because it's really kind of gotten to a point, everybody's getting very frustrated. You know, the second thing I want to say is the aggregation report. You know, so last year, you know, we saved the residents in total $350,000. This is a third or fourth year, maybe longer, so, you know, it's been, it's been well over a million, maybe a million five, that we've saved the residents just by doing this one thing, doing the aggregation for everybody in town, and the residents don't have to do anything. So the administration just takes care of it, brings it forward to us, and it's been a great program, you know, as everybody's, you know, has, having issues day-to-day expenses, it's great to know that the, at least your electrical rate is lower than it could be. Thank you.
Anyone else? Select person Gilfis?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Town Manager. I relish your reports. I think it's a really nice way to get a snapshot of what's going on, and even though we were together two weeks ago, it just shows, you know, how much work is being done and the value that the community is getting out of all of this. So, the couple of things that I made note about, I am jealous and want to participate in the Civic Leadership Academy. I recognize why we are prioritizing people who have not been serving previously. I would like to be involved, so maybe something to consider about, like, providing the syllabus or materials after the fact.
Absolutely.
Something like that. Or potentially, if you're just going to keep running it, then there will be time for all of us. I also met with Colin today about the Community Choice Power Supply Program because I was not familiar with it, and I was delighted to find out that I am a part of that program and saving money, so again, thank you. Yeah, and looking forward to hearing from National Grid. There was yet again another power outage since our last meeting, and I saw folks talking about it on Facebook, so I think probably, once we get the date finalized, maybe I'll drop a note on the Facebook group just to let people know and have them tune in or join us.
Thank you.
I'll echo what you, what the last two folks have said. In speaking to people as I go around town, the number one question I get is about why we have so darn many outages. So it is a point of contention with a lot of folks, and, you know, the sooner we get answers from National Grid, the better. If it's, you know, if it's our problem, if it's a traffic problem, if somebody hits a light pole or whatever, fine, then we'll, we'll deal with that, but if there's anything other than that, you know, I'd love to hear, as Chairman, as a committee member Cohane said, I'd like to hear what they're going to do and how they're going to make our life a little bit better. Second question I have is in relation to the Sherburne Recreation Property. What is the scope of Phase 1 work?
The Phase 1 work is just all of the sport amenities that I mentioned. We had originally hoped to include volleyball courts. Unfortunately, the budget didn't allow it, so that's the only item that was talked about as part of Phase 1 that didn't make it, but all the other sport amenities were included. I think that the Phase 2 would be new amenities as, as money allows. I know we have a founding member, I guess I'd say, of the Sherburne Road Committee here, but Phase 1, I think, was what was most talked about, and we were able to include all of the amenities with the exception of volleyball courts this round.
Good, thank you.
Yeah, and Mr. Chair, so we didn't include the volleyball court, but the, the one that we were kind of on the fence about was really the basketball court, and that was possibly going to be in Phase 2. But the more we started really looking into it, what we decided as a committee is that, you know, all the equipment is going to be there for the pickleball courts, it's the same equipment that's needed for the basketball court, so to gain some efficiencies, let's do the basketball court now. And then when the bids came in, we can, you know, we realized that we didn't have enough money for the volleyball courts, so we can move that off into Phase 2. We were very clear with everybody, this was definitely a Phase 1 and a Phase 2 project. So, you know, just wanted to make sure everybody realized that, and I'll say the Sherburne Committee is super excited, off-the-charts excited, can't wait to see this breaking ground, and hopefully we have a groundbreaking ceremony for our new recreation facility also. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Nope. Okay. So a couple things. One, I'm glad that you discussed phasing of the Sherburne. I think it's really important. I think it's important for us to phase things in because people are going to have to get used to it. I think we're going to have to figure out how we help keep it up. I think it's going to be incumbent upon residents to help keep things clean. Sometimes there have been situations at the elementary school with the basketball courts and, and I don't want to say it, but we need to have nice things and we need to be able to keep them up, and so I think this will allow us to kind of work our way into, into some of those. So the town is spending a good amount of money on this, and I think it's a fantastic facility. I think it's going to be great. Let's, let's just make sure that everybody understands that, you know, our small town needs to take care of those items. Relative to the electric, I thought everybody was opted in the last time, and then you really had to opt out because we, we had this big problem the last time we negotiated, and it actually cost us money because, or it cost some residents money. Because there was a small, relatively small, I think it was like 20, 25% of the people that were not opted in, and so this time, everybody was in. When we look to renegotiate, I'd like to understand who isn't in. Is it, is it 5%? You know, where are we at on that? Because I think it's a fantastic program. I think you look at other towns and they're catching on and, and, you know, it's worked out fantastic for us, and I, it's a big success. I don't know whose idea it was originally, but it was a fantastic idea, and I love it. So when we get to that, I would like to see what some of those are. I think the, you know, the rest of it, I think this is a lot of great stuff going on. I did hear perhaps a volunteer for somebody who might want to help out with the, with the Civic Academy, someone who's already been an elected official and, you know, maybe.
Very enthusiastic.
I thought, I thought I heard something in there, so.
Thank you.
And if there's anything that we can do to help support you and Rony on this, because I think it's a fantastic program, I think that there's a lot of folks who, perhaps they have time to be involved, they're spending their time on, on social media and they want to know. This may give them, you know, a better way to, to help understand how things run and how, how they can help and, and impact things positively. So I think this is great. I do think that people should know that there's, we've already got applicants and space will fill up, so don't wait. If you're on the fence about it, sign up. I think it'll be a great opportunity for, for some folks. So thank you for the, for the detailed explanation. I think there's some additional items for other projects that you're going to have updated on the website as well.
Yes.
So there's, you look at these and you think, wow, there's a lot of stuff that's going on, but there's even more that's happening. So, you know, there's things that are happening at the center of town. There's the bicentennial irrigation, there's the police station, there's a lot of things that are happening, so I think if we can put those online and point people to those, I think it's, it's great. There's a lot of really good things happening, and so residents should try to keep abreast of what's going on. So thank you for the updates. With that, I guess, yes?
Mr. Chair, if I may.
Yes, please.
Two questions that you made me think of while you were remarking. So one was, if people are not enrolled in the energy program, are we able to engage them and either remind them of the benefit or ask them why they opted out? Or is that kind of like, you've opted out and we should respect that?
Every time we do the energy, every time we renew the contract by the agreement we have with Colonial Power, they send a notice to people who are not enrolled saying, hey, this is your chance. And there are some people who have very good reasons for opting out, whether they've competitively procured their own agreement, they've got some other electrical arrangement going on. We don't get a list of consumers that are not on it. They send it through National Grid, and we've, the only feedback I've heard, you know, when we first started this, it was, this sounds too good to be true. You're, you know, you get a letter in the mail that says, hey, we'll give you your energy cheaper, National Grid will continue to deliver it, you don't have to do anything. In a day and age where scams are all over the place, that was one reason which I think we've overcome through some of the efforts that Eric mentioned. And then the second reason is that they've gone out and they've, and some people very seriously competitively procure their own aggregation, it's like a sport. But yes, every time we renew the contract, folks that are not already enrolled, the agreement requires that they get another notice saying they can opt in.
Lovely. And also for the Civic Academy, how are we engaging folks to solicit applications?
Sure. Right now, it is, unfortunately, the Neighbor to Neighbor is on its summer vacation, and it won't return until after the, the publication is over, but it's all, it's on our social media, it's posted at the Council on Aging. I don't know if it's yet posted in the library, but we certainly will make sure that it is.
Lovely, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Excellent. And I will also echo that I'm interested in having National Grid come in. I know they have the stats because they have to report them to the state, and I think it'd be important for them to share those with folks and see where we compare with others. I know that there are some challenges, particularly on the Westford side, because there, there may be equipment that's in Westford that impacts us, but I think having that will help a lot of people, and we will definitely make sure that folks know when we're going to have that meeting, and hopefully there'll be a, a room full of folks, and we, I promise we'll make it towards the beginning of the meeting so that they don't have to sit through our entire meeting. All right, so with that, I would like to move to new business. Why don't we start with the review slash approve year-end transfers? Is this you, Colin?
It sure is. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this is a very good year, I would say, in terms of year-end transfers. In summary, Town Meeting sets the total budget, the operating budget, and they are categorized by expense and salary. At the end of the year, in order for us to close the books, the Department of Revenue requires that for any department, which is the combination of their expense and salary line items, for any department that has a deficit, that we find other places within the budget to cover the deficit, and the authority to approve such a transfer is two-part. It lies with the Select Board first, and then the Finance Committee has to approve it as well. So before you, we have about $255,000 worth of deficits throughout various places, which I'll cover in the operating budget. Fortunately, we saved quite a bit of money on health insurance this year. And so we're gonna be able to cover that deficit entirely from savings in the health insurance account. In some years, you can, you'll see that we're pulling a little bit from this line, a little bit from that line. It gets a little messy, but we're fortunate that we saved a decent amount of money in the health insurance line. Because I know the question will come, why do we have so much savings in the health insurance line? It is very tricky to figure out if people will change plans, if people who are not on our plan will enroll. And so we always budget for the worst-case scenario. And in almost every year, a large chunk of the money we use to cover a deficit comes from the health insurance line. So with that, there are a few smaller items in here. On the, in the Town Manager's Office, there was turnover in fiscal '24, both in the Assistant Town Manager and the Town Manager line item. Those were both in deficit because there were vacation payouts. In our auditing services, we were required in fiscal '24 to hire a new auditing firm. And as this board is well aware, we face some bookkeeping challenges that required us to expand the scope. We've rectified all of those as a part of bringing on a new firm in the middle of the year and addressing those additional scopes. The budget was not sufficient to cover. The good news is because we addressed all those issues in fiscal '20, well, it was for the fiscal '23 audit, but it happened this past fiscal year, we'll be back down to our normal audit amount in fiscal '25. The tax title and foreclosure is an interesting line. This is money that we paid to our tax title attorney to handle a foreclosure on a property that owed back taxes. This money eventually is recouped by the town when we sell that property or if it sells on its own. However, that revenue would fall back to the miscellaneous nonrecurring revenue, so it can't reimburse a general fund line item. So that's $52,000 over. The $26,000 in the Treasurer's Professional Services, as this board is aware, in August, when we decide, when we determined that there was issues with our cashbook, we hired an outside independent CPA firm to come in and help clean it up and then to retrain staff so that we're on the same page. That unfortunately did cost money that we didn't expect to spend, and so that came to about $27,000. The two legal line items relate to labor litigation, specifically an arbitration case that's ongoing. Again, that is a relatively difficult item to budget for, but they are relatively expensive. So both of those line items were overspent. The good news is we have reached the conclusion of the arbitration, so I don't expect that case to linger for much into fiscal year '25. There was a small deficit in the MS4 compliance account for $1,700. On the two electric that you're seeing, one is for our Town Hall, one is for the police station. This is a combination of increased utility costs and the fact that we get a tremendous amount of credits through the Charles George landfill solar farm. We are one of four entities that are on what they call the Schedule Z, which is how the owner of the solar farm transfers credits based on percentages that we set. State regulations limit the number of times that you can change the credit allocation. And so very often we see, okay, the First Parish is getting way too many credits. There's $40,000 sitting there. We should transfer that to another account. Unfortunately, because we're not the only ones on that Schedule Z, some of the other entities update the Schedule Z, and that counts toward the maximum number of times you're allowed to do it. This issue was identified early in fiscal '24, but because we had reached our maximum number of Schedule Z changes, we weren't able to make any changes to cover the deficit. However, that will expire in November, and we've notified all four other members of the Schedule Z that we intend to make changes. So if they wanna make changes, we can do it all at the same time. We just can't do it one-off. So this will rectify in fiscal '25 because we will change the allocation of credits.
Mr. Chair, when you say other four entities, what are the other entities?
The Town of Dunstable is one, and then there's two small nonprofits that are part of it. And I would, I'm not really sure how that happened. I think that they were all somehow impacted by the Charles George challenges. And part of the agreement to, A, clean up that site and utilize it for the solar farm. Everybody had to agree to be part of it.
So is this to say that there's some unused credits that could have been allocated, but because we couldn't make the changes to the Schedule Z?
They're just, the good news is those credits don't go anywhere. So in November, when we go to change it, we'll have, I think now we're up to about $77,000 just on one of our larger accounts of credits that can be reapplied. And in doing the Schedule Z, we'll transfer those credits and update the percentages that go to each one. It's just a puzzle, you know, figuring out when the limit changes. So it's great that the credits don't disappear, but of course, it puts us in a.
Yeah, thank you.
No problem. The septic at the police station experienced some issues that we didn't expect. They're connecting into sewer as a part of the police parking lot project, so this will be the last time that we utilize the septic account. The police overtime has a small overage. This is largely because since September, we've had a vacancy in the full-time dispatcher role, and we have minimum staffing levels that we have to meet. On top of that, we did have a candidate that was in training for about seven weeks. And when the candidate's in training, we're paying overtime because they don't count toward our minimum staffing. So this $24,000 was simply because of that vacant position. We completed interviews last week, and I'm hoping to fill that position in the next few weeks. So it won't be an issue going into fiscal '25, but that's what that one is for. The fire one is for the holiday pay, which we talked about at Town Meeting. Fortunately, again, because the deficit is the net of any savings and deficits within the fire department budget, they had tremendous savings elsewhere in their expense lines. So this account actually ran a much deeper deficit, but we were able to offset a lot of it with savings elsewhere in the fire department's budget. And then finally, it's the street lighting account. This is also a mix of the credits needing to be reallocated, but also the fact that we're now year six of owning those streetlights. And so many of them are now out of warranty. And one of the things that we'll have to plan for in fiscal '26 is separating out the costs of maintenance of those lights. That the board may remember, in 2017, we started the process of purchasing our streetlights from National Grid so that we can convert them to LEDs and save money on the usage. Well, we've done that and we have saved some money on the usage, but every time a streetlight needs to be repaired now, we're paying to replace it. One of the streetlights goes for $4,700 inclusive of labor. So if you have, you know, a lot of issues, some of the purple lights were unfortunately ours, which we had to replace this fiscal year. One other thing that's hard to show in here is that anytime a car accident takes down a streetlight, our insurance company will go after the insurance company of the person who hit it. But again, that money, when it's reimbursed to the town, is done through miscellaneous nonrecurring revenue. You're not allowed to put it back into an expense account. So we may have recouped some of this money. I'm not sure exactly how many were accident-related, and it just shows up in a different place in the budget. So that brings us to $255,744. And again, we saved closer to $310,000 in health insurance. So we'll use $255,000 to cover this deficit. And when we close the books and DOR certifies it, that additional money will become part of our free cash. There are savings elsewhere in the budget as well. We didn't completely run it dry, but we only have to point out the money that we're taking to cover a deficit.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna make sure that people are aware of. This was one account where we had a surplus. There are other accounts where there's a surplus that doesn't sit in the slush fund. That goes back into free cash, which is part of the general fund for, you know, for the town. It's not like use it or lose it and they go and spend amok.
Right.
It is.
And it certainly doesn't roll over into fiscal '25.
Correct.
Yep.
Other questions? Do I have any other questions?
I do, Mr. Chair.
Yes, please.
I just wanted to just highlight a little bit. So I would agree with Colin. I think this is, you know, is much better than we have seen in the past. You know, there are certain departments that have been, you know, over, and we kinda saw trends of them continuing to be over. The only one that's really over as a department is really the Police Department. And Colin kind of explained the reasoning why from that one. But everything else is really, when you look at it, it's a lot of one-time items, which is really good news, right? So the accounting and auditing, we needed to do that. It's great that we did a little more detailed audit. As Colin said, the foreclosure effort, $52,000, we're going to get that money back. You know, we had an issue with free cash. Again, another one-time item, you know, $26,000. So everybody knows the Labor Council. We've been significantly under budget the last couple of years with the Labor Council. You know, but there's one, this is one last lingering issue that we needed to resolve. You know, and as Colin said, you know, we've kinda gone through the arbitration at this point. So we expect that to hopefully go back to where it has been, which is we've, you know, basically been well under budget recently with the Labor Council. In electricity, I do need to, I want to kinda discuss that a little bit. So there are some significant increases for Town Hall, Police Station. I'm not really sure how much of the street lighting. Why is there such a big, why was such just a big increase in the Town Hall and the Police Station? Is there something, is there reasoning for that? Is there something that we could look into? Even though we have credits, which is great, and I always hate to, you know, if we don't use electricity, that's even better, right? So I don't know if we've looked into the reasoning why those two are significantly higher than past years.
So it's important to note that the costs that you're seeing here are higher than previous years, but it doesn't necessarily mean that the usage is higher. For instance, at Town Hall, this is part of that shuffle game that we play with the energy credits. And so in fiscal '23, we were able to, we were below the maximum. We were able to make adjustments so that we never had to overexpend those lines. The Police Station is a little more cut and dried. This is an odd situation where for, as long as I've worked for the town, National Grid classified the Police Department as a streetlight. And so we were actually, you can't make this up. We were actually paying the Police Department's electric bill through the streetlight account. We noticed it mid-year last year when we needed to send a report to the Green Communities Program that it was actually the Police Department. So when they did their budget planning for fiscal '24, because they had never paid a bill before, I think they underestimated it. But all of that is to say that this is not reflect, this is not mean that there's additional usage. The other thing is we did not include Town Hall, any of our public buildings. We did not include them in the energy aggregation that residents have. And the reason was it significantly increased the cost on residents. So we have been separately getting our own rates, which have been far less favorable than the ones that we passed on to our residents. One thing that we could certainly do, because I agree with Mr. Cohen that we should be making efforts to save energy, we certainly can put together our usage in total for all these buildings, because I think that shows a more true picture. But these dollar amounts are really just, because of the way that Schedule Z works, we're always kind of playing a shuffling game to cover those. It is not necessarily reflective of the fact that we certainly didn't use $26,000 worth of electricity more than last year.
Well, thank you for that explanation. And I'm really glad I asked that question, the Police Station being a streetlight.
Yes.
That was worth the question. That was worth it. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and I think that dovetails into one of our goals, both for last year and for this year, is for all of our buildings, understanding, you know, what does it cost for us to keep them going? And it would be interesting to understand, do we have any opportunities to use energy better? I think the Police Station, the 24-by-7 place. You know, I think here at Town Hall, we're making a concerted effort to utilize the building. You know, obviously, we have more meetings than we had a couple of years ago. And so it could be a combination of things. But I think just looking at, okay, is this an opportunity for us to have some more efficiency in how we leverage the resources like electricity and everything else? So. Good, excellent. Any other questions, comments?
Just a comment, Mr. Chair. Once again, thank you, Colin, for your time and knowledge. We spent time going through every line item today because a lot of this I was not familiar with. And Colin just knows everything. Colin, and Colin was able to give context and background and state laws that were referenced. And I mean, it was really, it was a lovely hour on the phone.
Excellent. Thank you. So you need us to vote on this? Do we have a motion?
I just need a motion to approve the year-end transfers.
Chair, I make a motion to approve the year-end transfers as presented.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Carries 400. Review goals and priorities, housing production plan. Who has that one?
I will take this one, Mr. Chair. If, unless the board wants, I won't go through every recommendation in here. I really just wanted to see if there was anything on this plan that the board felt strongly about not continuing to include. I will note, as the board is aware, we're going through our housing production plan update as ours expires this winter. And the Affordable Housing Trust will be meeting later this month, and they'll do a deeper dive in a lot of these goals. But I didn't think it, I think it's been a while since the Select Board saw these goals. I did take some time to add updates to the status column. So I don't necessarily need anything specific from the board tonight, except that I wanted to get the conversation going as we move into the Housing Production Plan update. Kind of understanding, are these goals that we set now five years ago still relevant to Tingsborough? Are there new ones that we should add? And certainly, you know, folks can, board members and residents alike can reach out independently to us. Soon, we'll have a page dedicated on the town's website to the Housing Production Plan, so folks can see this in real time. So yeah, I mean, I'm open to however the board wants to proceed with this. If they want me to go through each individual one, there's quite a few. But I would note that we did complete some of the bigger ones, which is to get our first housing production plan approved by DHD. As a part of that, we established an Affordable Housing Trust, which Town Meeting authorized in 2015. And because we did both of those things, we were able to apply and be awarded our Housing Choice designation, which, again, doesn't just fund housing projects. We used that for the Town Center Project. We have a $400,000 grant application in for the rec project over on Sherburne, like I noted. So those ones have been complete. We've made substantial progress on a lot of our goals by adopting the MBTA Communities Act zoning, which made some of these goals possible. We continue to utilize the Mass Works Program. Obviously, we have a $2 million open grant for the private-public development next to the Highway Garage. The Zoning Review Committee has done a lot of the work in clearing up and making our zoning bylaws easier to navigate and much clearer. And a big part of that, of course, was clarifying how you comply with the Inclusionary Zoning Bylaw. And, you know, before you had four or five options, now you have to actually produce the units. So we've done a lot. We certainly have a lot more to do. But I just wanted the board to see these goals and have an opportunity. Again, this is not something we're finalizing anytime soon. We'll present a final draft to the Select Board at some point late October, early November, so we have plenty of time. And in between, NIMCOG will be hosting several public forum opportunities here in town for residents to get a sense of what their goals are. And again, I expect in the next week, week and a half, we'll have a page on the website where you can directly provide feedback on these goals.
So with that, I'll open it up to the board for questions, comments. Select person Gilfus, do you wanna start us off?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I did make a couple of notes, a couple of questions. I noticed that there's a lot of weight on the Toll Brothers Project and the MBTA Communities Act. Is there more that we could be doing to be making progress on those? I just worry about like putting all of our eggs in that basket.
Yeah, absolutely. I think that the, you know, the Toll Brothers Project is a small piece, but it shows that it's a part of our effort to diversify our housing stock instead of constructing simple, single-family homes. These are, you know, it's denser housing. And the MBTA Communities Act zoning, flawed as that law is, it is really just a baseline for a lot of these goals because it now puts in place the underlying zoning that will help somebody make a more dense development, that will include more diverse unit types as opposed to just those single families. So it certainly by no mean either of those does that mean we've achieved any of our goals. But if there was a project favorable to the town that would help with some of these goals now that we've done the MBTA zoning, it has helped. Is there more we can do in the way of zoning? Absolutely. But I think zoning is best done in increments. And I think that that just lays the foundation for saying, look, the town is committed to diversifying our housing stock. And now really, it's a matter of us making sure that we find developers who are interested in smart, responsible developments that achieve those goals.
Beautiful. I had also written down the question of how can the public comment or input? But you have mentioned that NIMCOG is gonna hold those listening sessions.
Yes, they're also hoping to be at the block party with input cards and QR codes so that people can provide the feedback directly.
Awesome. And then you mentioned that the Affordable Housing Trust is meeting later this month. Do you have the date and is that open to the public?
It is open to the public. They have not confirmed a date yet, but it will be the second to last week in July. We're just toying with which day it will be.
I hope folks join.
As a part of our launch of the Housing Production Plan Update page, we'll include the next public meeting on it as well.
No further questions.
Anyone else?
No questions, Mr. Chair.
Themself.
Yeah, I mean, so I think this is, I think this is good. I think that we should continue with it. I think that it is a starting point. I do think it's important for people to understand that the Housing Production Plan is not meant to have a lot of production. plan is not meant to have a lot of production. It meant, it means that we need to come up with new ways in which we meet the needs, um, of our residents for housing while maintaining, you know, the character of, of Tingsborough, and so that it's, it's controlled, um, so that, uh, yeah, and I think we did that with the MBTA communities, which, you know, had the potential to, um, really disrupt things. I think that there's, there are things if we did not maintain our ten percent, um, so our inclusionary zoning is really critical. We've seen other towns struggling to, um, have growth that i- that can be managed and integrated in.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but I do think that there's more that we can do. I do think that there, there is, um, there are opportunities. I think we've got a lot of people who live in this town who would like to have housing that's, you know, not an acre and a half or two acres and, and, uh, you know, single-family homes, and, you know, our children and, and our parents are looking for places, and I think that, um, it's incumbent upon us to help provide that vision of, you know, what can be there, because it's a great town and we don't want people to have to move, because, um, either they can't afford to stay in a, in a large home, or they don't want to, um, and they would like to have something that's better. So, um, I think it's important for us to continue down this path. I think, you know, we need to do it for the state, but we also need to do it for, for it's right for the town. So, um, I don't have any specific items that I would say add into this. I know we bring it up in zoning and, and a variety of other, um, areas, um, so I think it's important for us to keep this on our, on our list, and I'd be interested to see what some of the other groups between the Affordable Housing Trust and some of the others have for ideas to, to help achieve those goals of providing reasonable housing while, while, you know, maintaining that we like to keep the, the character of the town as well. So, um, you're not looking for anything, just, this is an update and continue on and-
Yes.
Do you think you've got sufficient guidance from us on that?
Absolutely.
Excellent. All right. So with that, we can move to appointments. Start with the zoning review committee.
Okay. At the select board meeting on June twenty-fourth, the board voted to continue the zoning review committee for a period of one year, terminating on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. As such, the planning board, zoning board appeal representatives, as well as a resident of, uh, representative, need to be appointed through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. The zoning board of appeals and the planning board will be appointing their representative at their next meetings to be held later this month, and we ask that the select board reappoint Mr. Larry Clausen as a resident representative on this committee.
Open it up for questions?
No.
I'm, I'm on the committee. Larry's on the committee. He, um, is very helpful. I think he provides, um, some, some great questions and perspective on it. I think he, um, is absolutely somebody that I think, uh, helps, um, increase the value of the company, so, uh, committee, I'm, so I'm totally on board with this. So I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move the select board appoint Mr. Larry Clausen as the resident representative to the zoning review committee, effective immediately through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, as presented.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Carries four zero zero. Recreation committee.
Okay, as you recall, as you may recall, there are a few vacancies left after conducting the twenty twenty-five annual appointments on June third, twenty twenty-four. Town manager Loizel recently reached out to residents again to see if there was any interest in the remaining vacancies, and received the following letter of interest. For the Recreation and Parks Committee alternate member, Arti Dissea. Ms. Dissea has been a resident since two thousand nine. She has volunteered for sporting events, STEAM-related activities at the library, and dance classes. She is particularly interested in contributing to the initiatives that provide accessible recreational opportunities for all ages of, and groups and abilities.
I'll open it up to questions, comments. With that, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move the select board appoint Arti Disai as the alternate member of the Recreation and Parks Committee, effective immediately through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, as presented.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain? That carries four zero zero. Ratify collective bargaining agreement, NEPBA Local eight A. Is that you?
It certainly is. As the board is well aware, six of the town's seven bargaining units had collective bargaining agreements that expired on June thirtieth. Over the course of the last nine months, we've worked diligently to settle most of them. To date, we've settled four of the contracts and have two remaining. The most recent contract that we settled is with the Patrol Union, NEPBA Local eight A, which was approved at the board's last executive session meeting. The contract includes a three-year total increase in wages of eleven percent, which is in line with the three other settled contracts, and, most importantly, with other communities, um, similar-sized communities with similar-sized departments and budgets and what they've settled. It also includes language adjustments that we believe will help with employee recruitment and retention. It is becoming increasingly more difficult to hire good police officers, and when we're lucky enough to get them, we are in a superbly competitive market. Civil service is changing the way that they operate so that it's easier for folks outside of civil service to transfer into civil service departments and vice versa. And so it's really important that we, um, have a collective bargaining agreement with our patrol officers that is within the constraints of our financial abilities, but also recognizes, uh, the role they play. After nearly ten bargaining sessions, ironing out the details to make this contract something that recognizes that, um, I'm grateful to the patrol bargaining team for what I think was a very collaborative effort. The FY twenty-five budget approved by Town Meeting included a two-and-a-half percent adjustment in salary for this unit, so we'll be asking for a small budgetary increase at the fall town meeting. We are still below our levy limit, so we're not asking for above what is taxable. Um, the difference comes to about one percent when you factor in some of the changes that we made elsewhere in the contract. Since this contract was approved during an executive session, the select board is required under the open meeting law to ratify it publicly.
I'll open this up for questions from the board. The only thing I'll say, Colin, thank you for, um, working diligently with the union. Ten meetings, lot of effort, uh, lot of back and forth. It is hard. I mean, this is the challenge with Prop two and a half. Um, you know, it's really hard to sit there and say that our, you know, our police officers, um, you know, aren't worth a lot more, but unfortunately, that's the way the, the things work, so I appreciate their patience and your patience in getting this done. So, uh, thank you for making this happen, and it, this covers us for the next three years, which is fantastic. So with that, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move the select board ratify the approval of the MOA with NEPBA Local eight A bargaining unit for fiscal years twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six, and twenty twenty-seven, as presented.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Carries four zero zero. Review approve change to select board meeting schedule.
Well, after you all said very nice things about me, I'm proud to admit that I accidentally scheduled a meeting for you on Memorial Day, but none of you noticed it when you first approved it, so we share the blame.
Because we plan to be here.
I, I like that about you. So what you have before you is an amended schedule. The only thing that changed is in June, we've switched to June second and June sixteenth, so it's still the same number of meetings in June. It originally called for meetings on the ninth and the twenty-third, but given that we have to skip May twenty-sixth, we didn't want to wait, um, such a long time between your meeting on May twelfth and June ninth.
Yeah, I caught this putting, putting, and Colin was, yeah, we already found it. Um, so minor change, should be far enough out, nobody had any conflicts at that point, and I think we would've had some conflicts on Memorial Day.
A few.
So with that, anybody have any concerns about those changes? So I will entertain a motion to accept those, uh, well, two changes, I guess, or the changes as presented. So moved.
Seconded.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Carries four zero zero. Um, so I will open it up for select person reports, uh, before we go into executive session. Um, Mr. Schneider, you want to start?
Nothing this week, Mr. Chair.
Select person Gilfus.
Mr. Chair, uh, thank you to Prudence Brighton for being here and for the coverage this week in the Sun, um, about the, uh, what was it this week? It was about the eighty-four Kendall. Um, I got a message from a resident about it referencing the Lowell Sun article, so thank you. Um, thanks for keeping us in the news, keeping folks informed. Thanks for reading. Thanks for watching. That's it.
The only thing I have for folks is, um, connected into what we were talking about with National Grid and the outages. Um, folks, uh, please, there are kids, uh, it's summertime, the kids are out playing. Um, I know people are in a rush. Please, the, the roads that we have in town are very windy, and it's, um, you know, our, our first responders do not want to see somebody else with their car wrapped around a tree. Um, please be safe, uh, that, you know, not just the drivers, but the people all around, and it's not just because of electricity. Um, you don't want to have any accidents, so, um, if people can keep the speeds down, you may see increased police presence. I hope you see police presence, and you look at it and say, geez, maybe I shouldn't be speeding. So, um, please be safe. That's all I have.
Oh, can I respond to that?
Please.
Um, there's something that, um, I saw residents talking about, about, um, I think it's Lowell's participating in a pilot program to add movable speed bumps? Um, and there was interest from residents to see if we could also explore that. Is that something that's part of the NIMCOG Vision Zero?
Um, yes, obviously, control of where and if those happen in Tingsborough is a joint decision of our police department and DPW. I know that Deputy Woods and our DPW superintendent Jake Swicker have received requests. Um, it's not as simple as saying it works in every street. A lot of our streets are not suitable for that type of, uh, a temporary obstruction, but certainly residents with specific street concerns should feel free to reach out to either our superintendent of public works or the police department. Um, and they have all kinds of things that they do to help with these situations.
Glad to hear that it's on the radar. Awesome. Thanks.
Yeah, I talked to the chief about that, and I, I think it's important for residents to understand that there can be unintended consequences to some of these things. In a neighboring town, um, the, the board put in a, uh, a four-way stop sign, thinking that it would help address some of the issues. It actually caused more problems because people weren't aware, uh, of the, of the change, so, um, we have public safety professionals, and I think it's important that we identify some of the challenges, and I think speeding is, is absolutely one that they're, they're very familiar with. Um, there are ways in which we can have signs there that tell people when they're going over the speed limit, and, and, uh, there's temporary things. Um, I think that there are ways in which we can do it. I think ultimately, it falls upon the residents and the people driving through to be responsible, um, because the reality is, you know, no matter what you put in there, uh, somebody has an opportunity to do something that's unsafe. And, for example, if you hit a speed bump, even a temporary one, at a high speed, it may actually cause more of a problem. So, um, these are things, a- as Colin mentioned, if folks have concerns about safety, reach out to DPW, reach out to, um, police on the, on the business line, not the, the non-emergency line, please, um, on those types of things, and, uh, those professionals will be able to determine which ways, um, as they have been for, for many years, to help keep us safe.
Thank you.
So with that, I will entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Mr. Chair, I move that we go into executive session under exemption three to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the town, and the chair so declares. NEPBA Local eight B arbitration update and eighteen TL zero zero one two two three, Town of Tingsborough versus Reco Junior Michael et al. And under exemption two, to go, conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-use, non-union personnel, police chief.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call vote.